Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, July 20th, and this is a work session of the Board of Supervisors regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. Act dollars. And first up, we have on our agenda is just some updates from our previous meeting. I know that I spoke with Lisa Markley, our deputy auditor, who stated we did receive our first allotment of funds from the best buy.
Yeah, I got deposited on the 15th.
The 15th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine million, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, nine hundred and nineteen fifty. So there's like one week for the hour-long, hour-and-a-half-long.
Navigating through the US Treasury portal to just sign up to be able to go down those runs.
And when do we get the second draw?
I recall it saying six months.
That's what I thought it said, too.
Is that what I...? Yeah, I kind of... I'd have to look at it because I don't recall it directly, but it seems like at first they said six months after the first one. Now I'll have to go through all that again. Or, no, I don't know if Lisa has to go through that all again, or if that will be automatic six months from the date.
And I would assume if I have to go back in again, there'll be some sort of a notification or whatever for us to do it. At least it's all set up this time, so hopefully if we have to go through it, it should be much easier than...
But I think the only... this time's already scanned, so I think it...
Okay. Other updates. I know I've been reaching out to the communities. Actually, I have another meeting tonight at 6:00. Many of them, as I kind of reported at the last meeting, they have not really discussed with their board yet. So the information that I'm getting right now, much of it's coming from the mayor and kind of their thought, where they... their ideas of where potentially is the money. It hasn't been discussed with their full councils yet. So to know exactly what the rest of the council may want to do, I'm very yet... I've been trying to get, do they have some sort of timeline to when to make that determination? Because they understand the timeline altogether with the dollars.
The timeline we are...
Yeah, same, right, the timeline we are. But I'm just kind of trying to navigate a little bit to see, would you have a set date or a set timeline when you'd like to make those determinations? I know, you know, for some of them, again, it has been... A couple places have brought up, you know, that wish they could do roads and trails, which we know that that is not available. Many of them are working on their sewer projects. Some have asked if they could use some of the dollars to help pay down the debt from their sewer projects. That, I said, I don't... I didn't answer. I don't... I don't know.
I want to say that was...
I'm thinking it wasn't excluded on too, but when they asked me on that, so I just said I didn't want to...
Right.
Not anything right in front of me and stuff. And I said, you know, also confirm that the final rules aren't out there yet.
Right, exactly.
We've got the interim, so things could change based on what was inputted and stuff.
I think it's the preliminary one said March 2021.
Right.
But you could go back with three months' pay. I think there was two years. But nothing else. Is that right?
Right, but I think they're thinking if they're putting the money during the timeframe, could they... could they use that as... Yeah, I'm unclear. I just told them that's a good question. I have the ISAC work group tomorrow, so that Lisa and I are on. So that's one of my questions to find out and help them find out more information on. Because that has been a question with, you know, some of the communities.
Funds may cover costs from March 3rd, 2021, through December 31st, 2024.
Right.
Yeah. I think it's...
That's how I took it, too. As I said, I just told them I would give clarification and get back with them on that. So I hope to by our next meeting, we'll have a little bit more detailed information.
Have any of them that you talked to drawn down the funds? Or not many funds?
I don't think any of them yet have drawn down their funds yet.
I don't know. Are they going to the state? Do they just go to the state so the...
Yes. Yeah, I think Ames is the only one that...
That directly?
Gets right. Directly. The other ones have to go through the state. Some of the communities that I talked to weren't even clear as to how much money they could potentially be receiving. So I sent them that information. Some weren't even as clear as to what those dollars could be used for. So I sent them some information on that as well. Other ones, when I talked to, literally, they were saying, tonight's our first night we're going to talk about it at our council meeting. Or some have said, yeah, we haven't even brought it up yet at our council meeting. We should probably start having some conversations on it. So if there are other additional questions you think I should ask them, I'm happy. You know, some of the things that you think of, or at least that you think of, that I should ask them as well, I certainly can do that. I kind of laid it out there, so we're just trying to get an idea if they know what they're going to spend their dollars on, that we're doing these open work sessions, trying to figure out what we're going to do with our dollars and don't want to duplicate. I'd make no promises to any of the communities that the dollars that we... that we will be receiving is what we're doing with them. But trying to figure out what their needs are and what may fall under the parameters as they read right now for those dollars and what we might be able to do to help some of those communities out. So they're... it is... it's very clear to them that, you know, I'm not promising you so much money at all. And they've all appreciated the dialogue that we've reached out and, or at least talking with them. They've all appreciated.
Boone County has some potential interest in the workforce training. I mentioned that last time and I... Once we get our proposal, I'm going to send it on to Boone County and they're going to see if they're... if they might be willing to put some funding in for their residents. That's about all I've got, you know.
My Treasury interim plan will identify several other ineligible rules, including funding death service.
Okay.
And it's explained in the frequently asked questions, 4.3.
Oh, in 4.3, thank you. And as I told them too, I didn't have my paperwork if I'm going to ask them. So when they ask me the question, it's like, I want to say yes or no, when it's not right in front of me, so.
Your own reason.
And so... So we met with centralized intake yesterday, and there's a lot of frustration in identifying a connection between what people are needing and COVID. And a lot of hesitancy to do anything without really knowing. I have not gotten an answer from Treasury yet as to what their rule... what their guidance meant, like, give me some more guidance on your guidance, guys. So centralized intake, they're swamped. I mean, all Wendy has time to do is just process the applications, but isn't really identifying a lot of obvious connection to COVID. There's... we know there's need for rental and utility assistance. We don't know how much of a need can be tied to COVID. We don't know how much greater the need is going to be on the 1st of August compared to what it is now. Again, we don't know if there are a lot of people whose leases are just not going to get renewed. Good Neighbor said that... Between 60 and 100 households a month is what they're helping. And they're seeing rents of 950 to 1,200. Carrie McPartlin was not able to join us, so we have no idea how much Salvation Army is helping with that need is.
Does she know?
No. It's like, oh. Yeah, so because they're so... Because it's so hard to make a clear connection to COVID, what I would really like to ask is if we can't take some money that the county already has, that would not have any of those requirements attached to it, to help our emergency rent and utility programs for this group of people that's going to be out on the 1st. And I don't know if that is offering a grant option to some of our service agencies.
How much money are you talking about?
Well, we've got... we... We've got $4,500, I believe, already, set aside for housing. Am I remembering that right?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand.
Thirty-five hundreds.
Thousand. Yeah.
Budgeted, budgeted.
Budgeted, yeah.
Budgeted in housing rehab in that area. I told Latifah when she asked me the question, we'd probably move it to the... We'd probably move it to Service Area 3, which is general welfare, welfare services. Or just take from the ending fund, the unassigned ending fund balance, as opposed to messing with the housing rehab that we may still use this year that's in the budget.
Yeah, switch. Well...
I don't know that how many... I don't know how many people, 45,000.
I think that... are you thinking of like a percent? Like... 25%? Would put 25% toward a $900 rent or... what's your... what are you thinking?
Well, I'm thinking making the funding available to, like, Good Neighbor and whatever guidelines Good Neighbor uses. You know, whether they're helping someone with a full deposit or a month's rent.
Or a month's, yeah.
However it is that they do that, making more funding available for them to...
We have to have a contract with some kind of expectations in it. We can't just do a donation.
Right.
So we have to get a little more specific.
Well, she's... Okay. Yes, if you're using recovery funds, but if you're using general fund dollars, you still want something in writing, but it doesn't need to be as specific, probably. Would you agree with that?
Right, it wouldn't need all of the same recording type information, but yeah.
But it'd be similar to the kind of contracts we have with asset agencies.
Right.
So it would be similar, yeah. Yeah, and I know, so I know some of these organizations, and maybe they've made some changes due to COVID, would have a limitation of, you know, their criteria may be, you know, we won't do anything in arrears or, you know, it's only kind of going forward to help you out, or we'll only help you, you know, a couple times a year. Are you looking at... have they changed any of that criteria to you now? Or... because I know that was one of the areas that you were questioning of, people that may be behind.
Right, right, but this... this wouldn't be to help people catch up on it. It would just be that emergent, get you into...
Gotcha, okay.
Shelter, get you into your new place or whatever that is.
Gotcha, okay, okay.
And I don't think Good Neighbor is back anyway.
No, no, you're right. They don't, or whatever. That's why I was just asking, because I knew you had mentioned about folks that may be behind.
Yeah.
I was just thinking clarification.
So maybe something simple like a deposit and first month's rent.
Right, I mean, if that's what somebody needs.
And a lot of places, if you're doing apartment, there is, they have an application fee, you've got to apply.
Right, and that's why I was thinking if we made... If we were to make funding available for some of these agencies that already do the work to apply for, then they've already got their framework, and they can tell us what their framework is, and we can say yay or nay on that, but we wouldn't have to develop a whole program and say, this is exactly how we want you to spend this.
And I did reach out to Good Neighbor, ask them what their guidelines are. So I'll share it.
Okay, great. I mean, I think the... One thing that was raised in the conversation yesterday was just making sure that people weren't... that we weren't duplicating. And that centralized intake would make that even easier to make sure that people are being served completely here, not being sent all over the place, and not getting served twice.
Could be... that would be something that would be less bureaucracy as a... versus with the...
Absolutely.
With these ones, as you said, trying to connect to COVID.
Don't you suppose that really everybody's got that same problem with that, though?
Yeah.
We can't in St. Louis County say, how do we... How do we determine whether it's related to COVID or not? Everybody across the nation is going to have that problem. But they said these funds are here for this purpose. You know, I'd almost rather say, let's, you know... If somebody comes back later and says, I don't think that was an allowable use, you know, pay it back from unassigned funds.
I think they'll have brought the assigned funds to begin, like, as opposed to trying to make it fit.
And then supplement the... our dollars in for...
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
And that's certainly just going to be a question we can ask tomorrow, Lisa, on our call.
Certainly.
But here's my concern. We have not $18.8 million to use or lose. We really need to use that money.
I think we will. I... I mean, I agree, yes, we want to make sure.
That's why we want to make that, you know, right away, like today, say. And we're not, we're just... I mean, we're just, this is a work session, we're not doing... But I would want to make the decision right now that we wouldn't use rescue plan funds for this. But you're wanting to get a decision made right now.
Well, I mean, if... yeah, yes. Because if we're going to do... if we are going to do that, then it needs to get on the agenda for next week so that they can cut a check, you know, to whatever agencies apply before the 1st.
Which she's already asked really nicely if we can do handprints for that, because we're done paying claims for...
I didn't quite catch what you said, I'm sorry. And...
We're done paying claims for July.
Oh, gotcha.
So even if it gets approved next Tuesday, then it's going to have to be handwritten, so she asked really nice.
Gotcha.
I was really nice.
I didn't see chocolate, but she was really nice.
Let me ask a couple questions.
Yeah.
Okay, this is something you want to put on the agenda for next Tuesday. We need to know who the money's going, how much, and who it's going to, to have it on the agenda and probably have a contract, I would think.
Would we need to know who the money is going to? Or would we be establishing funds available that could be applied for from different agencies?
Are you wanting to put it on an RFP?
No, I'm not.
Oh, okay.
No, no. But if it's a grant, if it's a grant that we're offering, then we got to write the grant.
Right. That is... that's what I would call an RFP, a request for proposals.
Okay.
You're going to want to write... you're thinking about writing a document that says St. Louis County is committing to do X amount of dollars to help people who are becoming homeless as a result of the eviction ban lifting. Please send us a proposal. Is that what you would be doing? And then you would... and then the supervisors would decide? Okay, so you've got to have a proposal written.
Okay.
See, here's something...
Or are you thinking of just...
Okay, let me... let me back up the track here and tell you what I heard.
Okay.
Putting money in the budget or putting money in a place for available entities, agencies, the central intake talks to, they need funding, whatever, putting money in the budget to be available for that and them coming forward and saying, okay, we spent X number of dollars on helping these people get started, can we have this money? Simplizing it from what you're talking about, from what I can tell. But I don't know if that's what you're talking about.
Yes. So it's specifically... so what... I mean, these agencies are already serving people.
Right.
Okay, and they already have budgets to serve people.
Right.
How do we know? Are we bringing in a new group of people? Or we're just saying, here's some extra money to serve the same people you're already serving?
Here's some extra money to serve the same people you're already serving, because those people still need help. I mean, if this is... If this is a group of people that you wouldn't otherwise help again because you helped them last one, then those people wouldn't fit in your criteria. But if these are people that you would have been helping this month anyway because they're coming to you because they can't pay their rent or their deposit, here's more money to do the work you're doing.
It would be plus getting new people, right?
Yes.
Who might get caught up on that eviction cliff.
Yes.
Okay, you just define them. You just define the group. For people who are being evicted as a result of the cliff.
I don't know. I don't know that we need to have it be as a result of the cliff necessarily. If someone's coming to... I was just thinking, if someone's coming to Good Neighbor because they need to get into an apartment and they don't have their deposit to be able to do that, making the funding available to Good Neighbor so that they could help that person get their deposit made, regardless of whether they can't make their deposit because of the cliff.
Is Good Neighbor not already doing this?
They are already doing this.
Okay. So it may be, I mean, we're into a new fiscal year for these agencies. So they... it may be people in the past, or this past fiscal year, that sought assistance through Good Neighbor, for example. They may be... so some may be the same people, but in a new fiscal year, needing assistance again. But you may get some other people that have never sought out assistance. Did I caption that correctly? Okay. Good Neighbor has their criteria. And just because I don't know, does Good Neighbor help with deposit and first month's rent? Or just deposit? Because if that's kind of what we're wanting, then that might have to be a new criteria. I do know for some, a barrier is just filling out the application, you know, whether it's a $20 or $50 application to complete, to see, you know, to be eligible for an apartment complex. That might be a barrier as well that folks could use the funds for. And we're not just referring to just Good Neighbor.
No, 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 just using them as an example.
Right, so the question is, are the other agencies have the same criteria as, like, Good Neighbor? Or is it different? And I only ask that, is are you wanting it more uniform of what those dollars are used for? Or, you know, if someone says, now, we'll only help this person once a year or once, you know, are we... is that... are we okay with that, I guess is the question.
I... I understand. I think I understand what you're asking. What I... what I had in my mind was just making more funding available to agencies that are already doing this work, regardless of whether they're helping with first month, deposit, application fee, hotel room tonight, you know, make... just making more funding available for them to do the work they're already doing. And that it's specific to getting people housed.
And would it be something, are you envisioning something that we would let them know that money's available now or wait to see where they're at within there? Just for here to have them, kind of like an asset agency of, do you come back and ask the board for additional money? Or do we just upfront and say, we've got additional money because we know your needs are going to be greater? And then what if they don't expend those dollars? What's the expectation? Then do we pull them back, pull those dollars back?
Yeah, good question. I was thinking upfront. And I don't know, I don't see a situation that they wouldn't spend it, but...
Which... what agencies would we be talking about? Good Neighbor, Salvation Army?
Bridge.
Bridge.
St. Thomas Aquinas. And I think there are a couple of other churches. But I'm not sure exactly what they are.
Which ones get asset funds already?
Well...
Four houses in the four... Four just purpose. None of them get the county's asset... None of them get county dollars for asset funds for rent utilities. So that has been the county's policy. And the request that I'm bringing forward next week on reviewing, revising the asset funder priorities also have information on there about revisiting the county's pre-pandemic policy for not providing asset dollars for rent utilities. Because I think that during this particular period, the county may want to take a closer look at that to see if you want to help those agencies expand their reach for some of those residents who are really struggling and, you know, are not getting helped because agencies may be running out of funding.
And let me... let me backtrack to what I said earlier about using the spot... using the recovery act funds. On page four of the Treasury guidelines, do you have a... section?
There's so many different.
I think this falls under, is what I. You're, you're way, way more into it.
Economic impacts.
So right here.
Will bring assistance to workers and families, including aged and unemployed workers, job training, as well as households placing food, housing, and other financial insecurity and additional needs, funds for support, survival benefits.
So, you know, I think, I think that it could, it very likely could fall under the addressing negative impacts caused by the, the public.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yes.
So, so, yeah, so your, so my comment about using unassigned funds, I, I think we could use these if, if that's the, if that's where you want to place the dollars.
So, yes. But it also, all through their, um, their guidelines, they state, "The recipient should first consider whether an economic harm exists and whether the harm was caused or made worse by COVID-19." And then assistance to households, food assistance, rent, mortgage, and utility assistance, counseling, legal aid to prevent eviction or homelessness, blah, 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 lists, all these great things. A recipient, a recipient may presume that a household or population that experienced unemployment or increased food or housing insecurity, or is low or moderate income, experienced negative economic impacts resulting from the pandemic.
And who, we wouldn't be helping anybody with this who didn't fit one of those.
Right.
Because you said low and moderate income.
Right, yes.
See, I think we can use.
Yeah, I think, I think Latifah's point is a direct correlation to, to the pandemic.
I, I don't, I, I don't think that that is the intent.
No, I don't think so either.
But because they say on the one hand, make sure you can show this is related, and on the other hand, they say, "Well, you can presume if they're low or, you know, blah." You can presume.
Make up.
That does not guarantee though.
Right.
And so that means what we need to do is make sure that we have written it and it, our agreement or our contract or whatever it is in a way that says we have to make sure this is related, and then you have to bring documentation to show that it's related, and by that time, we're three months from now. So that was the only reason that I was bringing up using funds that we already had that we didn't, we didn't even need to be worried about, because I think this is gonna work itself out. I mean, I think we're going to know soon that we can spend these funds and not have to do all of that gymnastics. But until we do, I certainly don't want to end up finding out that we, we did it, and now we have to pay stuff back and we did it wrong and.
So that goes back to what Lisa was saying, was using those general fund dollars. And then if it's clearly, if you have a clearer guidance that we can use those dollars since there is a little, on the one side here and the other side, it says something different, then you could replace those.
Can you come hand me? Are you comfortable doing that?
Way more comfortable doing that, so that it can happen. As opposed to having to jump, like she said, jump through hoops.
Okay.
And we could replace those dollars.
Yeah, the replacement.
Absolutely.
Of the general fund with rescue plan dollars, that's my question.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna ask you to say it one more time to make sure I'm understanding. If we took, if we took funds from a general fund to do this, and then we find out, yes, we can use it, we can take the rescue money and put it back in the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, that's even better than what I thought.
Yeah, because one of my, one of my thoughts from, from the very beginning is we can, we can reimburse the county anyway, or for some other things, like COVID leave that we granted. We put a, I put a dollar amount on that, it's like $16,000, it's not a lot, but, but that's one of the eligible, one of the eligible uses. That's already, that's already, you know, been paid out, so that would be a movement.
And again, we can ask tomorrow, we can ask tomorrow.
It's not something I want to have continually, but, but, but there are circumstances that, yeah, that's totally.
And we have no clue when those final rules will be.
Correct, exactly.
I'm, I'm going back to my notes on the, um, the call that Rob Sand had with ISAC. And the first thing he talked about, the first question he answered was, could we contract with nonprofits to do the work? And his, it is very simple. By all means, contract, be accountable in terms of what specifically is being purchased, that it's providing a service that's quantifiable, not a donation, and then you request invoices of some sort from the, from the provider provides the service. So those are all things that need to be included in the contract, and that's why I was asking some of the questions I was earlier, because I'm trying to get at, how are we gonna quantify it? And, and where you started talking about this, I think it's, you're right, it's the immediate need that we are talking about. And you said, "August 1, people are gonna be evicted." You know, "We can't wait, let's do something." So, so that's why I, I would be, think it would, you know, if we can kind of keep it simple and say, for people who are being evicted as of August 1, hour about August 1, you know, whatever, for a month or however you want, long you want to do it, that we would be willing to put funds towards, let's say, first month last, rent last month, rent deposit, whatever it is, it gets somebody into a lease. And just say, that's, that's a quantifiable thing. It addresses the immediate need. And that would also, by the way, probably help some of the agencies because they might be using funds that they had gotten otherwise for like their, what I would call just kind of like their general, um, number of people that they're serving. And what you're looking at here is, August 1 is gonna up that. So that's the ration, that's a rationale you could write a pretty simple contract for and probably would, would. And I have to think that if Rob Sand says this in, you know, regarding the rescue plan, that's what he kind of looks, you know, auditors look for anyway, that whole not a donation thing. Because I know of a city that got in trouble, has gotten in trouble with the auditor's office because they just do a donation of public funds. And we, and we've had exceptions in the last several audits. And in fact, and, and that's exactly what he's just looking for in general, is when you're using public funds, you've got to show the accountability and that you're getting a certain quantifiable service. So if we did that, that would, you know, that doesn't say that's the only thing we would do for housing. But it says, we're, we're, this is why we're working quickly, because we're addressing something that's gonna happen right there to people. I mean, maybe you want to cap it, maybe you don't want to pay over $1,000 a month, five, 900, 800, 700, whatever. But you could, you could put together some kind of a formula that would say, and that would say to the agencies, now, I'm still not sure how you're gonna decide who gets the money.
Meaning, you're not deciding who, who gets the money, are you referring to the agency or the people?
The agency.
The.
And can it go through the centralized assessment? That's not the right word, what is the phrase?
Centralized intake?
Intake. Can centralized intake, how, I don't know how their, their process, how they're making the decisions, but could they decide where to send somebody? Could they makes, could it be a couple more questions, since part of their intake that would decide, yes, this person is eligible for the county's special money, and they should go to this agency because of whatever? Or can you just want one agency doing it?
Well, if you have one agency doing it, then my assumption is it's gonna probably become a staffing issue. Because you're gonna get everybody that's gonna come to that one agency versus what, the four, five, or six that you have. And that may be problematic as well. Because then they probably need another staff person. Potentially, I, I mean, I don't know, but that, that may be the issue, is if you just have it going to one area. Just something to consider.
Or would you tell all of these, these agencies, if you have somebody who fits in these criteria and you help them with this one-time thing, you're eligible to get reimbursed from this money the county has. First come, first served, when it's gone, it's gone. I mean, how do you budget it out? Those are just, I mean, it doubles in the details. And if you want to do it quickly, we gotta figure all those things out.
Right, right. But also might be asking those agencies if they would have the capacity to do something like this. You know, how they're already doing it for them to take on something with a little different criteria of what we're, you know, what we're saying. That would kind of, kind of, kind of come to, or some may say, "Gosh, no, we just can't do it." Or that's not what we're wanting to do, or how we're wanting to do our operation at all.
You have.
But there may be some others, some of the others that may, so you even know where to target those dollars then.
Who was it you're meeting?
What?
Who was it you're meeting? I'm sorry, I wasn't in your voice, I'm not sure.
Jody Stumpel.
Bridge.
Carla Webb. Lori Allen from Good Neighbors. Vanessa Baker-Ladner. And Sandra.
So Good Neighbor and the Bridge seemed to like the idea of us.
I didn't present it to them exactly like that.
Okay.
Because I didn't want it to sound like it was a pushy thing, because we hadn't talked about it. But I said, "So if I were to propose," what exactly would I say? Helping 100 families or 100 people, households. Funding to help 100 households. And both of them were like, "Well, yeah, it would help." It would be a drop in the bucket, but it would help. So, yeah. They, 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 yes, there's definitely a need.
And it wasn't the need, it was the capacity issue. And you probably didn't get a sense of wonder, what they specifically could do to help get them, help get the money.
No, no, not as far as, yeah.
I don't mean capacity by staffing, capacity?
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about, is can they, did they have the capacity to do it?
Right. I mean, I, long and short of it is, whether they have the capacity or not, they're going to be, these people are going to be coming to them for help, like people are going to be coming to them.
Yes, could they not know that until it gets started? Because the Bridge Home, for example, how many?
Seventy-five.
Turn away. I was thinking 300, but I could have that wrong.
They turned away 300 from shelter, and they have.
In how long time?
Uh, in, in the past year.
Year. Okay.
And they have 60 to 70 on their waitlist. And the people who are on their waitlist could be living in their car, living in a tent, doubled up in apartments, living in campgrounds, rest stops.
Do we know that there are landlords who would be willing to take this deal? Somebody who was just evicted? That's it.
Jody did mention she has relationships with landlords.
Okay.
And they also provide additional services once they get people in those partners. So they have a longer-term relationship and prevent to just say, "All right, you're in an apartment, I'm done with you." They have to provide additional services.
But they don't have capacity to do more of those. They don't have capacity to do more of those right now, because they, they can only have 10 or 11 clients or staff person.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
They, they're only, each supported housing staff person is only allowed to have 10 or 11 clients.
So I think that goes back to my question on capacity of, or staffing, do they have the staffing to be able to take on more people to do housing?
The Bridge does not have staffing to take on more people for their supported housing program. I think it's a different question, do they have capacity to handle people who may be needing emergency assistance, emergency sheltering? They're not in an emergency shelter.
So I guess, okay, so I guess the question now comes to, we're looking at that, so are we looking at, if someone comes and is needing emergency shelter, is this a one, two, three night, a week, or whatever, in a hotel? Or is it moving into an apartment? Because that's where I see, when I think of emergency assistance, it's either, okay, someone's about to get evicted, they need those funds right now. Yes, they may have been evicted, but they need shelter. Emergency, maybe they're only, they're in a hotel room, right? Or are we talking about more that long-term of, of actually getting into an apartment? And if we're talking about all three, that's fine, I'm, I'm clear when we use the term emergency, because emergency means something a little different to me than what it may mean. Either one of you.
And it, and it honestly may not just be one solution.
Right.
So you say that, and say, "Yeah, that's, that's it." I was just figuring what it costs to to help 100 people get into a first and last plus deposit, say 700 a month, times three months, basically, equivalent, it's 2,100. Times 100 people is $210,000.
Right.
But that's if the apartments are available, and maybe they're not, maybe they need to get motels right away. So. Yeah.
And do they need help with that process?
And they need help with that process.
And if it's dollars, you're, my sense is that the dollars aren't going directly to the person needing housing. It's, the dollars are gonna go to the agent, you know, to that apartment complex or to the hotel. So somebody's gotta be able to go over there and pay the check, or write the check. So it goes back to the staffing. They've got the staffing capacity to do that.
Right, that, that's definitely going to end up being.
Right. Right.
Particularly if the floodgates actually open at the end of the month and people are.
That's it. Right.
So when we look at this list of the, of the agencies that are helping people right now with housing, would we say that they have certain, somehow certain expertise? I know that when the Bridge was pretty much closed, Bridge Home's pretty much closed, they worked to getting people into motels. They did that real fast. So, just talking, I don't know, it's like we're just starting a process here, putting something together. Let's say we had. No, it doesn't work. It doesn't work, because you need some kind of front-end assessment. I, I just. I mean, if somebody will. I mean, if somebody will... Could, could.
I mean, just the question is that these agencies have money now to provide that service. Is it something where you say, they're going to go by their criteria right now and see what type of influx they get to determine what we need? You know, maybe, maybe they aren't going to have, I'm going to assume they will, but maybe they aren't going to right away have that huge influx. Or maybe they're going to have to be so overwhelmed that we will have to look at and say, well, what is a short-term? You know, you have a, some other temporary person in there to help with this. I, I, I don't know, I don't know. There's just so many unknown variables with.
Taking us back a little, could we, could we say the funding would be for assistance with rent? And/or to prevent eviction or homelessness? Full stop? And then if, if they need help with an application, money could be used for an application. If they need help with rent or utilities, it could be used for that.
Simpler. And you could it, you know, have it, have it like that.
If I were the head of an agency, I would say I need to know more about, that's real nice, but I send you a bill. And I'm not sure if what I've done with that phrase is what you have in mind. And I might not get the money. Me to prevent homelessness is an off-the-broad phrase. It's going to take different ways.
Right.
You know?
Right, but it could be paid for a hotel room for a week.
Say that then.
Yeah, it could be, I mean, it could be any.
So you'd want to have things.
It could be job training.
Because it could be.
Yeah.
It could be any number of needs in that moment that this individual might happen to need. So I was just thinking, keep it as broad as possible without being so broad that they're using it for job training. But also using the language in the interim final rule.
Well, then I think the question comes back to, remember these agencies already have their own criteria for how they help people. So are you, are we wanting to look at expanding that criteria? Because then they'd be getting a separate allotment of dollars to say they need to meet this. Or is this to say, nope, here, we want to give you more money to help more people. But they're going to have to, why, kind of like when I was with NAMI and we would invoice either the, you know, the region or the city or whatever. And we had to put, you know, what program and how many people served or whatever that was for to get that reimbursement. Would they just do that with just the dot you like, using those county dollars? I would probably use those county dollars first and say, okay, I want to get those expended. Or, you know, if you got a year to use it, I would use my other funds first and then start in on the county dollars to spend those out. Because otherwise their asset dollars have to be... They want to make sure they're spending those asset dollars.
The problem is, the presenting problem to start the whole conversation is eviction August 1st. And we talked about, we need to get something on there fast to make sure that people aren't on the street August 1st, August 2nd. I think that for me, say, use these dollars to prevent homelessness is way too broad. Because these agencies are already getting dollars to prevent homelessness. Not county asset dollars, but other asset dollars. Would that be correct, Sandra?
They, they do get funding from the city and.
Yeah, so we're trying to say, what's different about this? I think it's the eviction and I think it's, it's getting people housed, immediate housing. It's rapid housing is what it is. Getting people housed right away, handling the short-term crisis. Isn't that, that's what I've been hearing you say, I think.
Yeah. Getting, getting funding to, to these agencies to do the work they do. I don't know, I don't know all of what they do. I don't know all of the ways in which they help people or that people come to them for. And which is the only reason that I keep... I'm making a pinchy face. Is because, like, I don't, yes, I want it. The reason that this is even an issue is because of the moratorium ending. So what I don't want to do is say, here's the only way you can use this money. Oh, that person over there that needs that help, you can figure that out. Which they could, they do it all the time. It just makes me hesitate that I don't know all the ways that they help people. And if there's a way for us to just support the agency to do the work they're already doing, since we don't, well, I mean, if we're going to have American Rescue Funds going back to it now, but...
And I guess I kind of look at it as, you do have agencies that have those dollars to do the work. We're wanting to help kind of beyond, that's how I, I'm kind of seeing, potentially seeing that. With, because, I mean, I've worked with a number of those agencies before, just in my other line of work. And you're right, so there, people are coming to them often seeking whatever financial assistance to, to help with rent or utilities. I'm going to assume a lot of, if I recall correctly, a lot of the landlords, you know, the, the new leases are starting August 1st. A lot of them will need to be out of their apartments by July 30th. It's not July 31st because they want to clean and do the, you know, cleaning carpets and anything else down there. So you're really looking at probably the 29th or 30th that most people are going to be out by. So it's, it's, yeah, I'm just trying to figure, figure out as well as, do you initially set up a program where we do have more, a little bit more stringent criteria, for example? And see if those dollars are getting used up? And if not, do you kind of, do you either take them back or do you modify or amend what you were initially going to use those dollars for? Open it up for something broader, as long as they can still report the data back to us?
Here's something, I'll try again, here's something simple. Money for one month of housing, either a motel or a new apartment lease. $3,000 per person maximum. Cap. $3,000 would be maybe $2,000. Let's go $2,000. $2,000 would be rent, $700 a month and a first and last. First and last and a deposit, maybe 2,100, something like that. A motel at $60 a day, which is, I think, what the Bridge had. Was that right, Sandra? Did the motel the Bridge used, did they have a $60 a day?
I'm thinking it was between 50 and 70, so, yeah.
Okay, take 60 times 30 is $1,800 a month, about 2,000. Say 2,000 a month. If you, if somebody that gets evicted as a result of this eviction moratorium on around August 1st, here's $2,000 to house them for a month. Or you can claim, you can, if you can find them housing, we'll reimburse that $2,000 for that person for that month. And if that's 100 people, that's $200,000. My math is bad, I'm just doing it in my head.
Sounds right.
That's a start. Clean, simple. Up to 200, and we've got $200,000, so it's first come, first served. That's serving 100 people. I don't know that they'll get 100 people served in a month. I think that's a, maybe a good.
Some money can be used for utilities.
Sure, why not? Well, utility hookups?
Hookups.
What's that going to cost?
Or even, so they can't get their utilities hooked up if they owe a lot of times.
Well, yeah, then they've got to pay that. They got to pay whatever's in arrears before they can get something to it.
Right, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yes, that would be the question is.
I don't know if you're going to get all of your first and last month. But if it's 2,000, you can use some of it for utilities. You can use it for whatever you need most. Sure, why not? It's a, it's, it's something, if you're going to put together a program quickly, you've got to make it simple.
Right, I was just, I just know that's a question that would get asked.
Sure. Motel, rent, utilities. How's that? Does that work? That would be a month and we could see how it worked.
That's really, that's really what I was looking for too, was just to deal with what might be coming. And hopefully we'll have some of the fog cleared and know what our longer-term programs.
Yeah, that buys us all some time, till we know what the rules are, till we know, did this happen? We don't know how many people are going to be out there. We don't know.
Right.
You know, but this is, this, this, this could clarify that, you know, and to say, well, yes, a lot of people have other needs. Well, we know you have other money. You know, we're putting this out here because we see this as an immediate need. You know, talk to us in a month if there's some other needs that are there and we can talk about it.
So I guess the question is then, of that 200,000 that we're setting aside, is it these agencies then coming to us seeking the reimbursement then? Yeah.
The invoices. The invoices on eligible clients that they've served and the way we said we would reimburse for.
And so then we could just need clarity as to what they would need to provide on those invoices.
What?
Then I'll have to do a hundred.
Oh.
It's all about me, Lita.
I don't know as thoroughly as possible. Yeah, that's, that's a, yeah, that would have to be a part of the contract that we would have and say what, what needed to be included in the invoice.
I think, I think that sounds good. Just don't, don't shoot me if I talk to a couple of the agencies and they say, oh, my gosh, that's not going to work, how about this? And I come to you with a different idea.
Well, no, I think, I think you should, no, I, I think you should test it. Tell them, shoot bullets in it. Help us improve it, but help keep it simple.
Just like to do it by three clap numbers.
Yeah, but, and also, I don't know that this is, you know, this is, I mean, we're just starting something. Yeah. You know, there may be additional money, there may not. I mean, we don't know yet because we don't, they may not see the influx that first month, but they may by September see the influx. Because that's, you know, people will go to their friends or family or something else as they're starting to look and stuff. So they may, you may not see them going to those agencies at a higher rate than what they currently are for a hundred months or two. Then you might see that.
They're not going to stick in the car anymore.
Right.
And that's starting. And school's starting.
Starting, right.
So... Yeah.
So what I'm hearing is for planning, or for, for budget planning purposes, budget purposes, I'm going to put $200,000 out of the aside and put it into the, into a rent assistance line item in the, when I, when I amend the budget. Right. I mean, I'm going to bring that to you guys next Tuesday also, but I'll, I'll put that in there someplace.
That's great. And then we need some sort of contract.
Well, I, yeah, that's not my.
I know, I know, but I just, I don't mean to be just looking at you on the pen and just looking out. Just be, you just happen to be right there, Lisa.
She's, she's looking out here and pointing at this thing.
Looking at the owl that's right in front of me, so. So then we'd have to have some sort of contract that I'm assuming we'd want to give out to each of the, you know, like the Bridge, St. Thomas, Salvation Army, Good Neighbor, the other couple.
Two other churches.
Yeah, the two other churches that do this type of support and stuff. And then, yeah, there's, I mean, the one thing there's got to know is that, that 200,000 could be gone relatively quickly, so. Yeah, so some of them may be thinking, okay, I will do this, but if I'm wanting to help somebody, how am I going to know how much business? How am I going to get reimbursed or, or not for it? That's, that may be, that may be something that may hold some back.
Well, that is a problem, you know, is, it's, it's... And maybe that's where centralized intake could come in. Is somebody centrally is going to have to figure out, you know, how many of these have been claimed. And since centralized intake already works with these six agencies, could it simply be a rule or it could be in the contract? When you identify somebody, let centralized intake know so we can keep track of how many we have. So that way people aren't, you know, saying, oh, well, Kana's got tons more $2,000s and we really don't. I mean, that would just be, that would, that would resolve it. If they could do that, you know, that's, that's just one thing we'd ask centralized intake to do in the whole thing.
Yeah.
What also is keep track of the number of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we'd need to make, I don't know how they would do that centralized. Like, I don't know what that would look like as far as it, it, impact on their work. That's why I just wanted to talk to them.
Yeah, that would be a base touch.
Yeah, I mean, I was even just thinking is, like, for general services, I mean, you do your claims every other week. You know, something is just highlighted or just sent to them to say, oh, hey, this is, of that 200,000, how much have been, I want to add more work to you. But, you know, 5,000 has been expended or, you know, 12,000 has been expended just so they have an idea of, this is where we're starting at, this is where we're at. They've got a little update every couple of weeks.
And I just thought centralized intake because they work with all these agencies.
Yeah, yeah.
If they could do that, it'd be a simple spreadsheet kind of thing. Or a tally on the posted note. I'm fairly doing this. So what I'm hearing is, Latifah, you're going to run this by a couple of the agencies and say, does this sound like something that could be for a short-term helpful?
And then we need to give direction to staff at our next meeting. Unfortunately, we have the next meeting to develop some sort of contract.
Oh, I think we would need to have that proposed before next Tuesday. So to, to go on the agenda, I, I would think.
Let's not have the board direct, but if Latifah's saying she's willing to work with staff on that, maybe.
Yeah. That was what, that was kind of what I, that was kind of what I, I thought. That's what I would put on the agenda. That's the proposal and then the proposed agreement. I think.
Nobody directed anybody with the broadband stuff on the agenda, it just happened.
No.
Right. It can just happen.
I was just thinking process.
Yeah.
And that's good.
To do it.
Yeah, just the process.
Process is good.
Anything else at this particular time? Lisa?
You have something?
No, go ahead. I do, but I'll go after you. Are you sure? I'm positive.
Yes, I'm running forward in a budget amendment. As I said, we're gonna amend the budget in August. Of that budget amendment right now, what I've put together, and I'm just gonna run this by you, if you want me to adjust anything, obviously, it's easy to do at this point. As I said, I can't just dump the money in and, we have to, we have to kind of separate it out by service area.
And you're referring to the 9.4 million?
We're referring to the 9.4 million, okay? So what I've put together so far for the amendment is, we, we have some things we've identified that we think would be totally acceptable, and we, and that we're in the budget already for FY '22. That is the digitalization of your board minutes. So I'm moving those to ARA budgets. The barriers to facilities, but, oh, with, the, the facilities was proposing. So I'm putting those in. HVAC 2 and 3, that's 1.3 million. Hickory Grove Sewer and Septic. That was in the FY '21 budget, not spent, would have been moved forward to FY '22 with Mike's amendment. But I went ahead and put it here, so I pulled it out of Mike's budget. FYI, it's, all this stuff is coming out of countywide, okay? So as opposed to being out of departments like it used to be, no, as opposed to being out of departments originally, I'm moving it to countywide. It gives you guys the control. The department doesn't handle it, will still handle them, but they will be coded, so that they get coded correctly to ARA.
So you put 700,000 in for Hickory Grove?
Yes. 47 in for McFarland Restoration, which again, was not in FY '22 budget, it was in FY '21, he wanted me to move it forward.
47?
47,000. That whole project is 550-ish, but the, but the only part that's been budgeted is the 47, okay?
Where do you get that in the rescue plan?
The restoration, it's, it's water quality. No?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, no?
I'd have to talk to Mike more about that.
Scott River Stabilization. There's 50,000 in Scott River Stabilization dollars.
That's not.
That wasn't on the list originally, was it?
No, he told, he emailed me and told me that that was in this year's budget. Okay? There was, I have to, I have, I have to send you that. He emailed me and said he forgot two more things that were in this, in FY '22 budget, that would qualify events.
50,000?
Yep.
He had, did you have anything else for conservation?
No.
He had the Osine Land Purchase and Osbo Restorations, but I wasn't.
Couldn't find them. I couldn't find them in the FY '22 budget. I, okay. Here, here's how I'm handling that. I don't disagree that there's other things probably. And I don't want to limit us to only having X number of dollars moved into these funds and budgeted. So I also put a million dollars, I, I budgeted a million dollars in capital, a million dollars in management, a million dollars in county environment, and a million dollars in social services with no specific purpose. So that, if there's something that, that the board says, "Okay, we want to do, we want to move this to those funds," I've got it budgeted and it can be spent, and it doesn't have to wait for another budget.
Was broadband intended in one of those?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me add to that. I did add 100,000 in consultant fees for broadband in here, in the amendment. And 125,000 that the recorder is talking about for scanning projects. Specific, those are more, other specific things. The way this works, I don't know where we're spending the money. I'm putting it, I'm just putting it in a certain service area, thinking, "This is where we've talked about." Okay? Whether it be capital, county environment, social service, or management.
Um, we're gonna, I didn't get all of that written down.
I will send it to you when I give you the agenda too.
Yeah. Broadband. If, if, we're just on round one of broadband. And if all our service providers get their funding requests from OCIO, will be about 70,000 in match requirements. But Levi and I were talking, and he reminded me that he can't, they can't ask for 100% what they need. Now, they're also businesses, and they may be putting some money in besides, but for the tier ones, they can only ask for 75% of what it will cost them. The tier two's 50%, and tier three's 35. He said of his, that 5.2 that was in, that he'd given us before, that was the full cost. He probably could only ask for 3 million out of the 5.2. And it's not doing, you know, it's not doing, it's just the first year in terms of the OCIO funding. And the other thing he told me is if the OCIO does not get all 100 million committed, because they don't get enough requests, there may not be money for a second or a third year through legislature, because it's only obviously one year at a time, even though Ronald's plan was three years. I would suggest we somehow stick a million dollars somewhere for broadband. Not that we're paying, not that we have a plan for it now, but that we, we reserve some significant monies for broadband.
Okay.
Is that? And the seven.
Yeah, and I think for my conversations with the communities, although I'm reluctant to bring something forward right, right now, is that you know, a number of them that are looking at either their water treatment, or some that are talking about water quality initiatives, or, you know, the things that they may need the match dollars, or just some other, you know, just other assistance as well. It's hard for me to bring something forward, or even to figure out, "Look, it's still my end, when they haven't had the conversations yet."
Yeah.
Do, do you know, have any, are any of the communities going after community development block grants for their waste?
I don't know, I have mentioned that to them, so.
But nobody said, "Oh, you're ever doing that."
Right.
Because that's where we could be.
Right, but that could be a criteria too, is if we put money aside, we'd have to say, "You have to apply or have had applied for."
I'm trying to think what that timeline was. I don't know if Brenda told me, I'm gonna see if I forgot. It may be too late.
I don't know what that. And I can follow up with them too, to see if they have, and they just.
Yeah, I think that would be.
Yeah, and my, my thought process on, you know, here, here's, here's a, this, this gives us the opportunity to be able to spend some of the dollars. Nothing cut in stone or anything like that, but it gives us the opportunity to spend some of the dollars. Otherwise, we have to wait until the budget gets amended, so I'm amending dollars in now so that we can at least get, have the opportunity to spend them until they arise.
Yes.
So can we, can we put some money in? Housing development? It could be that, I mean, again, some of these places may need help with their water, sewer water improvements.
We have the economic development group meeting.
Great.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, this is my only note about the block grants. July 22nd, St. Louis County Economic Development Group, small communities aren't applying for CBPG grants. Assistances. Yeah, and the, so maybe just ask, maybe just ask Thursday. What, and I will look for, I got an email from Nick, I will look for that about the block grant in there, because there was a workshop, and he sent me a link to it, and then sent it recording, because I didn't have a chance to go to the workshop, or attend the workshop webinar. But maybe I can quickly get out of what the, what the timelines are on that.
I've got the grant up here, but it's 48 page.
You got it?
Yeah, and it's just not telling, I haven't found the page where it's telling me. Okay, application deadline, CBDG water and sewer applications are accepted and reviewed on a quarterly basis. January 1, April 1, July 1, and October 1.
Wow. So that might be something, we've got some time.
Right.
I don't know. Some of the small communities might need some TA, and I don't know where that comes from on that, but I know he did send out, Nick sent that information out to all of the clerks and the mayors. So hopefully, somebody got involved in it, but.
I know he did, because I know I had talked with him, and I believe he said he was gonna send out kind of another, just kind of reminder to them.
I think wastewater treatment is just like broadband in terms of, it's just so huge. You know, and 18 million doesn't go a long way when you're starting to throw it.
Right.
Huge infrastructure things, but if we were just to, to say, "Well, we did a million for broadband, what if we set a million aside for wastewater treatment?" To see if it would be helpful, and if you want a placeholder, is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, it's from my conversations, it's probably the big things that folks, communities have talked about right now are, you know, housing development, which we've kind of heard even with our presentation on there. Water quality and wastewater, then there, you know, water quality and wastewater initiatives. Some have already identified or budgeted for their wastewater, you know.
That's why I put a million in that, that quote-unquote service area for whatever it determines.
Social service, is that what you're?
No, it's the county environment one.
Oh, I didn't.
What you're talking about, calls under county environment.
Okay, I didn't write that down on my list here. So you have a million in county environment?
A million in county environment. A million in management, and a million in capital.
Okay, I thought you also had one for a million in social services.
I did.
Okay, you did, okay, okay. I just missed your county environments. I would say that's a good placeholder.
Right.
For now.
Right.
Because we can define that pretty broadly right now.
And that, that's, that's where the broadband falls under also, so I don't know if we want another, more additional dollars in that county environment, or if we want to wait and see how it plays out and amend the budget later in the year. I mean, I just wanted something in there so that if something is needed to do, we can do it.
So have you disseminated all of that 9.4 million?
No.
No.
That's what you're talking about, doing?
No.
Damn.
I don't, hold on. No, I have not disseminated all of it. Right now, I've disseminated 6.4 million of it. If you want me to put the whole 9 million out, I will. In different places at this point.
Well, that's what I'm just wondering, is that something that's fine? Would that be some, I mean.
My, my main concern were things like HVAC that, that is a project.
Right, right, right.
That is being done, I don't want him to have to hold up and wait for.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I, I understand your reasoning for that.
And the Hickory Grove, I don't think that's gonna move either, but whatever. Some of the things that were actually planned, and, and they're starting on, I want to live with it, some dollars budgeted so we could, so we can use them. If you want me to put the full 9 million in at this point, that's fine, if you want me to.
Yeah, and maybe all of these go under county environment. I, I'm thinking we're talking a million each to wastewater treatment, to broadband, and to housing right now, so that's 3 million right there.
Right.
And those are just, I mean, they're, they're placeholder kind of things.
Right.
But it gets, it gets, gets something there. So that might get close to, if you put those three 1 millions in, that might you get, might get you close to the 9 million.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, I don't, I don't, can't see the, the 9 million you're spending this year in this business. I really, I really absolutely can't.
I don't think it will either.
But I can, I'll put 3 million in county environment, does that sound good?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Where does housing fall? Is that in county environments?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a service area for housing recap, housing redevelopment, under the service area 6 county develop, or county environment.
But you've got, let me make sure if I understand. Some, some of the things that conservation had, you have separate, they're not under that wastewater treatment.
Correct.
You've got the 1.000 for Hickory Grove.
Separate.
47 for McFarland is separate.
50,000 for.
Did you do the edge of field practices?
No, he, he couldn't give me more information on that.
Okay.
I mean, it, it makes perfect sense to be in here, but it can also be in the county environment at this point in time, and then we disseminate where it goes, you know, later. Because that wasn't in the budget. So he's gonna have to come, somebody's gonna have to come forward and say, "Hey, this, this is a good use of these funds."
I do know that Mike had a, some kind of a conference call or Zoom session with ISAC, as did the other conservation directors, 10:30 this morning.
Oh, really?
Talking about the American Rescue Plan.
There, Johnny has a spot, aren't they?
I thought you'd want to know that.
Sarcasm, just another service item.
No, we'll hear trail. Remember, trails, no.
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 Right, no.
No, we've been told no to trails several times, but we'll probably hear it again.
So, yeah, I just wanted to give you, and I'm, I'm hoping tomorrow's, I'm putting some hope in tomorrow's meeting that we can maybe learn some more.
I know, that's what I'm hoping to. That's what I'm hoping to.
And see what, you know, see how other counties are handling this, because I'm, I'm just slinging where I think we might spend money at this point. And then file, you know, obviously, spend it on an appropriate line item when we do it, but gotta have it there in order to spend it.
Right. I know we have more discussion to do than talk about next steps in our next meeting date, but could you pause this for a moment, Bryce? Thank you that we're back.
So when you bring this to us, I'm probably gonna. So when you bring this to us, I'm probably going to ask you like, like if there's 3 million in county environment, you know, what's under that? You know, the things we talked about. It'd be kind of nice to have a little more detail for those of us who forget. Whatever. You've got, you'll have an idea, you've put it there, but you know, just so we can, and then maybe we could even, that would be a good way to figure out as we do say, okay, out of this, we're going to spend how much? You know, just have kind of a running spreadsheet to show what's left and available.
Got it. Everything's going to, I mean, everything we, we do for funding is going to have, is going to come out of the line item.
Yeah.
My point right now is I need to put it in a service area of some sort. And then when we pay for it, I will actually code it to the correct place.
Yeah.
So you will have a running total because you'll have.
Sure.
Right.
It'll be on the monthly reports or it'll be on reports that I can easily dump.
Okay.
The, the spreadsheet that I sent right before my trust.
Yeah.
On meeting. Sandra, remind me, I left a couple of things off, so.
Okay, that's just like notes of things I've been writing down as we go. Ideas, not necessarily things that we said for sure.
Yeah, and I was also, yeah, here's the, the thing. Some of the things that Lisa said were not on here.
Right.
And I was kind of writing them in and it's kind of like how to put the two things together. It's going to be the challenge.
Right. All right, so what's our next step? Lisa Markle, we're in the budget amendment to the Board of Supervisors. Latifah's going to update the spreadsheet and I'm going to assume, once you get the information from what she has too, that might, you can kind of pair it with what she has in there as well.
And work on the?
Work on, yes, as I say, work on the rent, rental utility assistance. Said I have another meeting tonight. And I just got an email that, from another city that I've been trying to reach with, to talk with them so far.
Oh.
Yeah. Hopefully have that all done by next week. Another question is then do we want to meet again next week? Which would be the 27th at the same time, or either 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock?
Let's try and meet at 2, just a second.
Two works for me, three works for me on Tuesday, so that's.
Yeah, two works for me. 27th to 2?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I think we could probably have the same type of agenda on there. All right, anything else for today? Nope. All right. That's for adjournments. Yeah. Thanks, everybody.